Morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We're going to start with a short prayer. Thank you, Father, for all of your many blessings. Thank you for this council today. Thank you for our staff. Thank you for all the fine people in the MD. Father, we're looking for some rain throughout the area. And bless this meeting and give us wisdom in your name. Amen. We have an agenda. Just wondering if there's any additions to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Reeve. Administration is requesting three additions to the agenda. 9.3.2, under Infrastructure Services, mini excavator. And 9.3.3, heavy-duty trailers.
9.3.3?
Yes. And under, under closed session, 12.3, MD action regarding nuisance fire.
That's 12.3?
Correct.
Okay, just need the adoption of the agenda now. Yeah, Counselor Swiger?
Yeah, I'll adopt that agenda as amended.
All in favor? We're supposed to do the old... Yes, sorry.
And, Mr. Reeve, if I could mention, while everyone's voting on the agenda, that it was brought to my attention this morning that at 11 o'clock, there's a service for Mr. Victor Ringette. I'm not sure of all the details, but as discussed earlier, it would be my recommendation that the recess council for, after the 10:30 delegation, when that's completed, to probably 1:00 to allow attendance by council at that, at that event.
Yep, thank you. Carrie? Need the adoption of the minutes, regular meeting, May 25, 2022.
I'll make that motion, please.
Sorry. Deputy Reeve Fedeau makes that motion? Call to the vote? Just press the green button, too. There we go. That's okay. Carrie? Any business arising from the minutes? Seeing none, on to development application, 7.1.
Morning, Council Reeve.
Morning.
Good morning.
This application is development permit 2022-D-084 for Jolene Hamel. The applicant is applying for a major home business for a storefront and cafe. The property is located at the Highway 28 and Highway 55 intersection, south of the city of Cold Lake. Adjacent properties are a residential subdivision, an industrial use subdivision, a quarter section and quarter section remnants. The applicant would like to operate Beaver River Market. This would be operated out of an existing garage that will be renovated with an addition of a deck. She would like to offer dining in the store and on the deck, and would offer a special, a variety of specialty coffees, drinks, snacks, sandwiches, and ice cream. They would like to sell homegrown fruits, vegetables, and flowers, fresh ground coffee and rolled oats, and would offer a variety of locally produced foods, plants, and goods. She would also like to be able to offer the occasional courses for crafting or cooking. The renovation plans would include a washroom and a certified kitchen for food preparation. They would have up to three employees and planning to operate from 5:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. daily. Referrals were sent out to the regional health authority for comment, and a response was received with direction for applying for a food handling permit. An Alberta transportation permit was approved for the use and assign. The permit was granted for two years without any road improvement requirements. The applicant would have to reapply for the Alberta transportation permit before May 17, 2024, and it will be determined at that time if a left-turn lane will be required and construction at the applicant's cost. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out May 18, 2022, and we received no response. Recommendation for development application 2022-D-084 is approve the request for a major home business for a storefront and cafe as a discretionary use as per Part 6, Section 47 of the General Regulations and Part 6, Section 69.2 of the Land Use Bylaw with the following conditions: Development to be located as per Section 42, development setback from public roads, minimum building setback from centerline of public road, 71.3 meters. Development to be located as per the minimum setback in the Ag District, side yard 6 meters, rear yard 6 meters. An approved building permit is required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. Applicable electric, gas, plumbing, and sewer permits are required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. Building waste materials shall be contained onsite in a waste bin or a covered enclosed trailer as per Section 3 of the Nuisance Bylaw. As per Section 47.3, major home business, a major home business may utilize accessory buildings while still maintaining the residential use of the primary site. A home business may employ up to three persons who do not live on the site or within the primary residence. A home business may not generate traffic uncharacteristic to the area. All required parking must be onsite. Outdoor storage and materials, goods, and equipment on the site shall be directly related to the home business and at the discretion of the development authority may be required, may require screening or fencing. The home business shall not, in the opinion of the development authority, be a source of inconvenience, material interfere with or affect the use, enjoyment, or value of neighboring properties by way of excessive noise, smoke, steam, odor, dust, vibration, or refuse matter which would not commonly be found in the neighborhood. The permit is valid until May 17, 2024, at which time a new permit shall be applied for if an Alberta transportation permit has been approved.
Thank you. Deputy Reeve Fedeau?
So, in order for this not to come back in two years, can we just make it based on the approval or disapproval of, of AT after that?
We put it to coincide with the expiry of AT, the Alberta transportation permit, just as an insurance that if Alberta Transportation doesn't approve it, the applicant does not believe she can continue on.
Sounds good. Thank you. Yeah, it's a, this will have a positive impact to the community, so I, I'd like to make the recommendation to council approve option number one, which is to approve the permit.
Okay. Thank you, Deputy Reeve Fedeau, for making that motion on behalf of council. That council approves development permit application number 2022-D-084, a major home business used for a storefront and caf within southeast 2262, to west of the 4th M as discretionary use pursuant to Part 6, Section 47 of the General Regulations and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the Land By, Land Use Bylaw for Jolene Hamel as per the recommendation presented. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none? Call, call to the vote? Carrie? Thank you. On to 7.2.
This is development permit 2022-D-087 for Sheldon and Laura Tatosi. The applicant is applying to place two beehives. The property is located at River Haven Multi-Lot Subdivision. Adjacent properties are residential lots and the agricultural remnant. The applicant previously had two hives on his lot, which were relocated after administration received a complaint. The applicant would like to obtain a development permit to return the hives to his lot as described in his letter attached to his application. The applicant is an avid hobby beekeeper and has received mentorship in apiculture. The hives will be registered with the provincial apiculturist as per the provincial regulations. The applicant's swarm plan includes monitoring and adding boxes or relocating extra bees to the farm to prevent swarming. If swarming occurs, they will contact the local apiary for assistance and relocation. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out May 19, 2022, and we received no response at that time. Recommendations for development application 2022-D-087 is refuse the request to place two beehives as the request is neither permitted nor discretionary use within Section 71, Country Residential Resort District of the Land Use Bylaw. Alternatively, council may choose to approve the placement of two hives as per Section 3, or Part 3, Section 18.4 of the Land Use Bylaw if the proposed development would not, would not unduly interfere with amenities of the neighborhood or materially interfere with or affect the use, enjoyment, or value of neighboring properties with the following conditions: as per Section 74, 71.4 of the Land Use Bylaw, minimum setback shall be front yard 7.6 meters, side yard 4.5 meters, rear yard 7.6 meters. The hives are personal, for personal use or enjoyment only. Must provide a copy of final provincial registration approval and premises ID identification number. Must have a swarm plan and disease control plan. Shall comply with the Alberta Bee Act and regulations. If at any time, in the opinion of the development authority, the use unduly interferes with the amenities of the neighborhood or material interferes with or affects the enjoyment, the use enjoyment or value of neighboring properties, the permit may be revoked, and the permit is valid for one year.
Thank you. Counselor Swiger?
Thanks, Mr. Reeve. So, I spoke with the applicant. He's, yeah, he did have beehives last year. He got about 200, or 150 pounds of honey from, from his two hives. So, pretty, you know, pretty interesting hobby. I also spoke with the, the only applicant in the town of Bonneville who actually applied for bees, so they do have, this person actually has beehives in Bonneville, too. So, anyway, I'll just make the motion that we approve it, option two. And, but I will ask our CAO, Mr. Hogan, just to comment a little bit, because our land use bylaw really should be updated to allow for hives. Kind of, they're, they're pretty, they're, they're allowed most other places. I'm not sure why we missed it in, in the MD of Bonneville, but I'll just ask for an update from Mr. Hogan on how we go forward.
I think you, through the chair, to council. This is an interesting application, and unfortunately, our recommendation as staff had to be to refuse it because we had absolutely no documentation, no authority, and no, in any of our documents to hang our head on, on a recommendation to approve. It's why the second option was provided, because council can always do what council wants to do. One of the weaknesses in our land use bylaw is that the, we would have the same issue if somebody came and applied to put bees on a quarter section. And I certainly think that we are planning on bringing the land use bylaw back for a major revision, if not a complete rewrite, in the not-too-distant future, and I certainly think the issue of bees needs to be front and center. I'll leave it to council at that time to determine whether country residential lots are an appropriate place to have beehives. There is only one set here in, in Bonneville. Bees have been controversial throughout the province, particularly if you happen to be a person living next door, and if you happen to have a, an allergy to a bee sting, having hives next door is always, would, would certainly be a cause for concern for many people. But I do think that in, in terms of our rural residents, our, our, our land use bylaw is somewhat restrictive in what is a, is a valuable insect for the pollination of crops and alfalfa, et cetera, et cetera. So, it will be coming back and for further discussion, and I think we'll be recommending that, in many places, that we expand our, our residents' ability to keep bees.
Okay, Counselor Swiger makes a motion for council on option two. And that's a long one, so I ain't going to read it. Is there any discussion? Deputy Reeve Fedeau, and then Counselor Crick.
Yeah, thank you. So, I have two questions. First one is, was this complaint driven, why, why the person is flagged or needs a this policy or this permit?
Through the Reeve to Counselor Fedeau, yes. Administration received a complaint last year about the hives, and because there was no option at that time to, for the applicant to apply for the hive, he was requested to relocate the hive, and he did. He complied at that time. We are bringing back a proposed, a research on beehives to the June 22 meeting. So, hopefully, we can address these before they become a problem.
Okay, so, so somebody just drove by, seen the hives, and go, that's not supposed to be there? There wasn't a stinging or anything like that involved, because, I mean, with the, the distance of, of the acreages?
We do keep the complainants confidential, but it was an adjacent landowner.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Yeah, I think, I think microfarms and places like this, they have a place in the MD, especially when you're looking at, you know, you know, acre and a half, two, three, 10 acres, and it's something that people can bring to the farmer's market, and it's actually, definitely has a positive impact to our economy here and, you know, going down to grassroots and everything else. I think it's important for that. So, I'd like us to definitely back Counselor Swiger's idea about amending our, our bylaws with that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Crick?
Yeah, just to clarify, was there any, there was no, like, concerns from neighbors about this permit?
Through the Reeve to Counselor Crick, we did not receive any concerns on this application.
Yeah, I think we should support this, too.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call this to the vote. Thank you. That's Carrie. On to 7.3.
This is development application 2022-D-088 for Brent and Brett and Lori Backy. The applicant is applying for a dog boarding kennel. The property is located on Highway 881, one mile north of the 881 and Highway 660 intersection. Adjacent properties are quarter sections and remnants. The applicant would like to construct a shop next to their house that would have 10 indoor slash outdoor boarding kennels. Each dog will have their own dog door for outdoor access to a fenced area. The maximum number of dogs onsite will be 20 if each run had two dogs from the same household. There would be two employees, and they would operate 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. daily. The location conforms to the, the 1,000-foot distance setback requirement from any dwelling on adjacent lands. The nearest residential parcel and adjacent dwelling are over 2,000 feet away, yard site to yard site. An Alberta transportation permit is not required as this development is not within the 200-meter care and control corridor. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out May 19, and we received no response. Our recommendation for application 2022-D-088 is approve the request for a dog boarding kennel as a discretionary use as per Part 6, Section 50 of the General Regulations and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the Land Use Bylaw with the following conditions: The maximum number of dogs to be kept onsite shall be 20. In determining the number of dogs, pups less than six months old shall not be included. No building or exterior exercise areas to be used to accommodate the dogs shall be allowed within 305 meters of any dwelling located on adjacent lots. All dog facilities shall be visibly screened from existing dwellings on adjacent lots. No dogs, including pups, shall be allowed outdoors between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. daily. During this time, all dogs shall be kept indoors. A boarding use shall not, shall at no time unduly interfere with the character of the neighborhood or the general enjoyment of adjoining sites. All permits issued shall be valid from the date of issuance and shall be canceled by the development authority for due cause. Shall comply with Alberta Animal Protection Act and Animal Protection Regulation, Regulations. Shall comply with Animal Control Bylaw 1371. Shall comply with Noise Control Bylaw 1657. Shall comply with Nuisance Bylaw 981.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kravjak?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve. I see no issues with this. There's no residents close to this one, so I'll make the motion to approve this as per recommendations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Kravjak, for making this motion on behalf of council. That council approves development permit application number 2022-D-088, a dog boarding kennel within northeast 1661-9, west of the 4th Meridian as discretionary use pursuant to Part 6, Section 50 of the General Regulations and Part 7, Section 69.2 of the Land Use Bylaw for Brent and Lori.
Becky?
Becky. As per recommendation presented. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? Seeing none, all those in favor? Nope, sorry. Call to the vote. Went back a few months there. Carrie, thank you. On to 7.4.
Development permit 2022-D-092. The applicant is Kathy Wosinko. The applicant is applying for north side yard variance from 15 feet to 5 feet for the placement of a mobile home. The property is located at 5018A, 50th Street in the hamlet of Fort Kent, across from the municipal recreation lot. Adjacent properties are hamlet residential lots and a hamlet, hamlet urban reserve dedicated quarter section remnant. The applicant would like to place their mobile home on the north portion of the lot. The applicant, applicant states reasons for the variance are: The laneway is undeveloped and unused. They plan to construct a fence which will create a physical boundary between the land and the mobile. The mobile does not have any doors on the north side based on the desired orientation. The Land Use Bylaw requires a 15-foot side yard setback on a corner lot flanking a road within a hamlet as per Section 77 and 78. Adjacent landowner letters were sent out on May 19, and we received some submissions. The neighbor was concerned about the placement and orientation of the mobile home and about the drainage from the lot. Through education of setbacks and illustrations of the lot, the neighbor is no longer concerned about the placement of a mobile and is happier it's going to be away from his property line. Oops. The neighbor was informed that all development permits are issued with a condition that states no person shall cause or allow the alteration of surface drainage to cause water flow or pooling on adjacent lot. This means that if the applicant or landowner would like to make alterations to the grade, a development permit would be required with a grading plan that illustrates the proposed drainage of the lot. This was discussed with the applicant, and they confirmed that there will be no changes to the grade or with this development. We also received a letter of support from a neighbor stating that allowing the five-foot setback provides much more usable space, which will, which allows for proper landscaping and gardening, and notes that there is an eight-meter alley road between this lot and the neighbor to the north.
Okay, thank you.
Recommendations for development 2022-D-091 is refuse the request for north side yard variance from 15 feet to 5 feet for the placement of a mobile home as it exceeds the 25% allowable as per Part 3, Section 20.1 of the Land Use Bylaw. Alternatively, council may choose to approve the request for a north side yard variance from 15 feet to 5 feet for the placement of a mobile home if, as per Part 3, Section 20.3 of the Land Use Bylaw, if the proposed development would not unduly interfere with the amenities of the neighborhood or materially interfere with or affect the use, enjoyment, or value of neighboring properties with the following conditions: as per Section 74, 76.4 and 77.4 of the Land Use Bylaw, the minimum setback shall be front yard 7.6 meters, south side yard 1.5 meters, rear yard 7.6 meters. An approved building permit is required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. Unapplicable electrical, gas, plumbing, and sewer permits are required as per the Alberta Safety Codes Act. Building material, waste material shall be contained onsite in a waste bin or covered, slashed, enclosed trailer as per Section 3 of the Nuisance Bylaw number 981. The building location to be staked out by an Alberta land surveyor, CET, or other approved designation in Alberta and submitted for approval by the MD of Bonneville prior to commencement of construction.
Thank you. Deputy Reeve Fedeau?
If we just kind of bring up the map again, the location of the site. So, the green line, that's the MR boundary, if I'm reading that properly. And then, so what's that green line up there for?
Through the Reeve to Counselor Fedeau, that green dotted line is the proposed five-foot setback.
Okay, so the red line below, that would be the?
The 15-foot setback.
So, where are they proposing to put the trailer, or, sorry, mobile home?
Mobile home. So, the proposed mobile home would be approximately in this location.
So, that's roughly the, the size of the mobile home as you're, as you're indicating?
It is a 16-foot by 80-foot mobile home. So, it is approximate, yes.
It is. So, if they would put it where our bylaws would ask them to put it, there would be, they'd be closer to the, to the neighbor than they would to the proposed location.
Correct.
Second question is, are, we're, I believe there's talks about putting a drainage plan in there on that, on that MR part of it. I know we're kind of, we were discussing that somehow, and I just wanted to see if that's still, still a possibility or what the ideas are with that part.
The section north of the lot is actually a registered laneway. So, it's a registered road.
So, I know there were some drainage issues in that area, and we were, we were briefly kind of talking about that a few months, like, maybe, not a few months, like, maybe a year ago, two years ago, about possibly doing something there to provide some mitigation to it. Just some questions. Thank you.
Counselor Swiger?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like, I wish council would look at the other drawing, too. Well, that one's fine, but the, the, just the, the sketch of the area, so it's right off Main Street, it shows a, an alleyway behind that. That's an alleyway just above that lot. It's another one of these hamlet deals where we've got kind of undeveloped alleyways that are there, and I kind of, I, you know, we, we have to kind of look at maintaining these alleyways, and so by allowing the mobile home on Main Street, I'm not even sure if that falls within their area structure plan for the hamlet. But then moving the mobile home closer to the alleyway is, is against our bylaws because you want an alleyway to be open enough that you can get, you know, service vehicles and fire trucks and whatever in through there. I'm not sure if I, I'm not even happy with a mobile home on Main Street, but that's just my opinion, when you know you have a mobile home parked just, just west of that. And so, I'm not sure if I'm quite happy with that. And I guess I would ask, as Counselor Fedeau did, why could the mobile home not go? Fadeth did, why could the mobile home not go? If we insist on putting it there, why does it have to have a change in setback? Are you saying it won't fit on the lot because it's too big? Like, what was the reasoning for having the setback changed? Is there a good reason for that?
Through the reef to Councilor Swiger, yes. The applicant did say that since the laneway is undeveloped, it's actually not being used currently as a roadway, and they do want to utilize the space as much as they can. If we go back to the other, the aerial, it is an L-shaped, and placing the mobile home within the setbacks does take a lot of space out of the lot, and with the setback further back, they get to utilize the...
I appreciate, I appreciate the comment, but it's not really a valid, you know, it's not really a valid request. If they put it where it's supposed to be, they have, you know, fifteen feet to the north. And so if we kind of ignore our bylaws and you look at that, you know, in the future, that could be an alleyway, and it has been in the past used as a utility corridor. There was underground piping in that alleyway for drainage years ago. I just hate to see us ignore our area structure plans and our, and our kind of plans for alleyways and that sort of thing, and, yeah, I'm just not really happy with what, you know, what the request is for.
Okay, Councilor Sutcher? Oh, sorry, councilors.
Yeah, so, I guess part of it is that alleyway, it had come to council, they were, that was the one that was being requested to be closed and sold. But there is concerns, the neighbor just to the south of this mobile home, he's got a drainage issue in the front of his yard. Just to the south of that, there's a fourplex, and the guy on the south of this one here, he's actually got the ditch dammed up, so the water doesn't, or the fourplex dammed the ditch, so the water won't come and flood the fourplex. So I don't know if we're ever going to need to use that alleyway for drainage, like Dana's saying there or something, but, Councilor Swiger, sorry. Yeah, I don't know, and as far as mobile homes being on Main Street there, there's, like, there's a lot of mobile homes on Main Street there, it's kind of, I don't like it either, but I'm not sure what a guy can really do. There's quite a few there, so.
Yes, councilor.
Well, yeah, I think, yeah, I think the bigger issue probably was that how that a lot ever gets subdivided like that, right? I mean, you, I don't think you can put anything on there but a mobile home, right? I mean, how would you ever build a house on a, on something like that and stay within the red line? So, I mean, we've had this discussion many times before, I know it comes up at Norser Heights, and you can't, you know, you can't do, you're so limited with these setbacks on these narrow lots that, I think it's foolish. I don't think if you, if you were to have the five-foot setback, I don't know how that affects anything in the alleyway, I mean, it's still an M R, you know, if you got to do anything in there, it's still there. It's not, it's not like we're going to develop that M R and take part of that property over, right? So, I mean, to me, I got zero issue with it. If someone wants to put a house on there, a mobile home, whatever it is, I mean, it's better than an empty lot, right, for sure, so.
Whoever wants to go first, just speak.
Thank you. Yeah, we have, we've approved many of these in the past, setbacks going from fifteen feet to five feet, and I agree with Councilor Skarson's comments as well. I mean, there's a back alley there, it's, it's not going to be affecting anything as well.
Deputy Reed Fadeth?
Yeah, I'm looking at the setbacks there, and the green line is pretty well almost the same variance as going to the south, as well to the neighbor, so variance issue's not just a matter of in future consideration, if we're going to be using that for something, will that interfere in our plans going forward, is my question.
Fortunately, a mobile home could be relocated if required.
So a couple other questions.
Councilor Crick?
Maybe this might be mere to General Manager of Bespelko, maybe even, if we go with the five-foot setback and allow that, is that going to interfere with us, if we ever have to get in there and do drainage work down that alleyway, or?
Through the reef to Councilor Crick, I would, I'm not in planning and development, but if somebody wanted to put their fence up on their property line, which is right there anyway, that would hamper any type of maintenance in the back alley anyway. So whether there's a house or a mobile home five feet away, or a fence right in the property line, and correct me if I'm wrong, if they can do that or not, but if their fence is right in the property line, that would be a hindrance to operations anyway.
Okay, good point. So I guess, it seems to me it makes sense, I guess we should allow it, really. It's like, like Councilor Skarson said, there's, what else can a guy put on that lot, right? With the size of it. I'll make the motion that may approve it, but I'd also want to say that maybe we should have in there that the fence on the north side needs to be a solid fence. If there's only five feet between the mobile home and there's no doors on that side, it could be a potential for a bunch of junk to get collected there and be kind of an eyesore, but if it's a solid fence, then it would at least make it so it's not an eyesore on the north side.
That's the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, just one second.
Through the reef to Councilor Crick, so you would like to add a solid fence construction as a condition?
Yes. Just, you know, as opposed to like a chain link fence that can see through and potentially is going to be an eyesore on the north side there, right?
And do you have a timeline that you would like to see this done by?
What's your recommendation?
I don't.
Six months? A year?
Yeah, Councilor Skarson, sorry, Dana, I'll get to you.
Just on, I mean, I don't know how we can make a condition that you put someone, have put a fence up, that's, it matters if it's five feet or fifteen feet, you're going to see the same thing, right? So, I wouldn't, I could never go for a fence, I mean, just approve it and be done with it myself.
We can't be forcing...
People put building conditions everywhere. You go to build a new house and buy a lot in Bonneville anywhere else, and there's tons and tons of controls on what you can and cannot build in the type we'd have to look. So if we want our hamlets to be attractive, then we need to make sure that we, I think, keep that in mind. So, yeah, I would, I would say if they have a solid, add a solid, the condition of a solid fence and give them one year after the mobile home is set up to complete the fence.
So you want to make amendment to the, to which one? What's your, what's your, what do you want to do? You want to do with option two, with a fence?
That's correct, yes.
Wait, one second.
So, so what do you mean by a solid fence? Like, that's, that's a big...
A fence that's not see-through, is not essentially...
I think there's going to be some budget constraints regards to the, to the person that's doing that with a solid fence, just a thought.
I'm going to go to Councilor Swiger here.
Yeah, I have two comments, and first one, I, you made a point just a minute ago that it's a mobile that can be moved, and I, and I guess I take, you know, I don't think we should be saying that sort of thing, because, I mean, these folks could actually build a foundation and put this on a basement. And so, and we've had that kind of comment in the past from, from planning folks that, you know, it's a mobile that can be moved, but I don't really think we should kind of be putting that kind of word out, because somebody's going to live there, you know, for the next thirty or forty years. We can't go to them in five years and say, you have to move your house now. So, you know, it's mobile, it's mobile, but it's, could be on a permanent foundation with a basement, so. But I will ask you clarification on the fifteen-foot setback. Yeah, we have done that in the past where we've allowed a five-foot setback, but that's not on an alleyway or a roadway. And so I'm going to ask you to dig up the regulations. Mr. Bespelko also made the same comment, that we can have a fence, they could have a fence on the property line, which is five feet from the, or which would be right on the property line, basically. So how does that fifteen-foot setback apply to their property and apply to fences and apply to buildings with respect to an alleyway? Like, what are the, what are the regulations? Why is it fifteen feet? And could they put a fence right there? Or is it fifteen-foot setback for the fence also?
Through the reef to Councilor Swiger, the regulations say that the development has to be fifteen feet from an alleyway. The fence can be on the property line.
Okay, and is there, do you know what the logic was for the fifteen feet? Was it sightlines, or was it getting fire trucks through, or was it, I'm not sure what the, what the logic, and you may not know either, but it'd be nice if we kind of knew that, maybe for, even for future. I don't want to throw, put you on the spot, but it just, you know, this isn't a normal community where you got, you know, we could allow that five-foot setback because it is an alleyway or a roadway. I'm not, I just don't, I'd like to know what the differences are.
So, the laneway was developed when the subdivision was created. When the applicant came to discuss the application with, with planning and development, we had to determine if this was considered a laneway or a back alley. Because the landowner, or the adjacent landowner, wanted to close the road, received an approval from Alberta Transportation to close the road, we determined it was a road which required the fifteen-foot setback.
Well, okay, that didn't really answer the question of why the fifteen-foot, what is the logic for a fifteen-foot setback? Just, I'm not sure.
Safety?
Maybe, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Miss Reeve, members of council. The subdivision was put in years ago, and I don't think, I don't think Ms. Poyet or most of our planning department was here when those regulations were created. So we can certainly dig back to the history and come back to council with what we believe was the logic for the fifteen-foot setback, but Ms. Poyet is correct, there is no regulation now that would prohibit them putting their fence on the property line. Little different than some of our adjacent urbans, for example, in M D of Bonneville or the town of Bonneville, you can't put your fence on the property line, it has to be, there is a setback even for your fence, I think at six feet. I cannot put my fence right on my back alley, there's got to be a bit of a setback. We don't have that regulation. I would also suggest that the topic of mobile homes has come up several times in my conversations with different councilors, and I do think it's a, it's subject for some long-term discussion, and, you know, this is a classic example about how important it is for there to be good planning upfront, because we're now in a situation where these narrow little lots, had the subdivision approved with larger lots, we might have attracted houses as opposed to mobile homes. And of course, we don't have a regulation determining what type of mobile home could go on there, it could be, our, our mobile home regulations are pretty, are pretty loose, so this could be, you know, you could have a nineteen sixty-eight single wide, and we've seen those issues in Ardmore, for example, where these older trailers have come in and created some problems. So I think that's a long-term discussion for council, but in terms of this particular one, I would also remind council that it was administration's recommendation to refuse the, the application because it subsides the twenty-five percent.
I'd like to make comment here about these mobile homes. I know we talked in the past year, amongst all of us, about these hamlets and everything, we're just letting mobile homes go everywhere. I believe we should got to get designated areas of these mobile homes, so we can help build these little communities with home builders and everything, and I believe we shouldn't allow this to go forward, and we start now, making sure we got special areas in all these places for mobile homes.
Councilor Crick?
Do we know the age of the mobile home that's planning to be put on here?
Not at this time. Through the reef to Councilor Crick, would a chain link fence with slats suffice?
So you're going with option two with a chain link fence?
Well, it could be a chain link fence, it can be a board to board fence, it can be whatever, but just not, not a regular plain chain link fence that's... I get, my concern is that it's, you got a mobile home, the whole yard is on the south side, there's no doors on the north side, they can, they can put stuff out of their side on the north side, and then there's just kind of a, some junk...
It's just my concern with every application that's coming in, if we're going to be doing all these extras and telling people what they got to do and what they don't have to do, I, that's just my concern. Yes, Councilor Swiger?
Yeah, Councilor Crick, I mean, I like your thought. We do have a nuisance by law, though, that if this ended up as anywhere, if it was a mess and an eyesore, then we send our constables out and they can enforce that.
Well, they can, but it, we've had issues in Ardmore that take, like, five, six years for them to get them resolved.
I agree.
Did you type that into a motion, or do you?
Mr. Reeve, can we just get confirmation if there is a timeline that they'd like to put on for having the construction of the fence, or if you just want to leave it open?
I'd give them, give them one year after the, after the mobile is set up.
So, Mr. Reeve?
Yes?
So if this motion is defeated, can it come back and removing that fence from the, one of the conditions?
You can do whatever you want, yeah.
Can I ask another question?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll ask it for Al, our C A O. The staff recommendation is to refuse this. There's a skinny lot there that's essentially, like Councilor Skarson said, good for essentially nothing other than a mobile home, so I don't know what the recommendation would be otherwise, then just they own a lot that they can never do anything on, or what is your kind of idea on that?
Thank you, through the chair, to Councilor Crick. It's my understanding that the mobile home would fit on the lot without the setback, they're just trying to maximize yard space. So it's not as if the mobile home would not fit on the lot, it's only they're trying to maximize yard space, I believe that's how Ms. Poyet framed it a little bit ago. So the mobile home would fit on the lot. The reason for the refusal, similar to the B issue, is administration has absolutely no, has, has no, we have no authority to recommend because it's outside any of the, in any of the regulations. Only council could amend essentially that regulation on a one-off basis. It's outside the twenty-five percent variance, and as a result, we have no choice but to recommend refusal, because we can't recommend, we can't recommend an option that's outside our own regulatory approvals. Council can amend that regulatory approval by, by option two, and then if you want to add a fence, that's certainly up to council. Obviously, understanding that anything you add to a condition is appealable.
Yeah, Councilor Swiger?
Yeah, this had come up probably a year, two years ago with that alleyway just north. I'll ask planning, what is the width of that lot presently in the front?
Of the lot? It is fifty-two feet north and south.
Okay, so that's, you know, if you're in the city of Calgary or city of Edmonton, a fifty-foot lot is pretty standard, so, anyway, that's, that's a good-sized lot. But I'll ask, maybe I'll have to ask C A O Hogan, if I knew the alleyway would never been, will never, ever be used again, I'd like us maybe to put some thought into, are we going to, are we going to maintain it as an alleyway, or are we ever considering removing that as an alleyway? But also, I guess, considering that there is an alleyway behind that property to the west that runs north-south, I'm not sure if that's an open usable alleyway, maybe Mr. Bespelko would know more about that. I'm just curious, should, you know, should we consider, you know, future applications to close that alleyway and make it a bigger lot? I, just kind of thoughts, I guess.
Through the chair, to Councilor Swiger, I'm not sure what the, the future would hold for that alleyway. It is currently part of the subdivision and the subdivision plan for that area, so what would be the future of it, I guess we could certainly come back with the closure on that alleyway, I'm not, I don't even know, is it a registered road?
Correct, it is a registered road.
So that would, that would require a public hearing, that would require going to the minister for approval, so that's a, that's a, probably a six-month process in and of itself, which I'm not sure how that, a decision probably being asked for today in terms of, in terms of the setback, so I don't know what, it's possible, but it, it hasn't been discussed... discussed, to my knowledge, administratively at this point.
Yeah, councillor Skarsen, and then back to...
Yeah, I just wanted to make a point after what councillor Swiger said about the Calgary lots, because you're right, and I mean, but show me a Calgary lot that has 15-foot bearings on their houses there too, right? So, those things are probably less than five feet apart from each other, so, that's a great point. So, I mean, if Calgary's doing it, we should be doing it too, you're right.
Councillor Swiger, and then Al.
Yeah, I'll just say the only, the only difference here, councillor Skarsen, is because it is a roadway, there's a difference, a different variance allowed because of that roadway, so that's why the 15-foot. And so, we could, you know, we could go to the five feet on either side, which you would normally have in, in an area, but...
I don't think that's true. I mean, every lot has a 15-foot variance, right?
No.
If it were adjacent to an actual lot, it would have the five-foot setback, but because it's adjacent to a road, it is the 15-foot setback.
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you. To council, I was just reminded by the general manager that this back alley we're talking about was actually, we had Alberta Transportation approval to close it, and council denied the closure. So, we're kind of circular right now. It was approved to close, and council denied the closure.
Okay.
And so I'll just, I'll just maybe ask CAO Hogan to have his staff again look at, like, I'm against closing alleyways and roadways that we own, but I'd like somebody to look at that area and say, alleyways are important, and they may just be important for, maybe it's garbage pickup, maybe it's fire service or whatever. I look at this alleyway running north, and it dead-ends, I'm not even sure why it dead-ends, and then there's a, like a big, huge lot between it, and then it goes further north. But I, I'd like to maybe look, have somebody look at this hamlet and those alleyways and say, do we, you know, are we going to kind of protect these, or are doing, maybe not, maybe we don't need that little east-west one? I'm not sure. I don't, I don't know. I'm not sure what our plans are for the hamlet.
So through the chair to council, I'm not sure what it is council would like administration to do. We did come apparently some time ago, that alley was closed, or we had approval from the minister to close it. Now, council denied that, and now we're talking about relooking at the alleys in Fort Kent again. I'm, I don't know what council wants us to do with this. It was, the back alleys were looked at, this back alley was approved to be closed, and then council, the council determined not to close it, and that's probably only months ago if I remember correctly. So, here we are back discussing the same thing. So I'm not sure what, give us some direction as to what council would like us to do with back alleys in Fort Kent.
Councillor Crick, then councillor Skarsen.
Yeah, I think the part of the confusion here is that council as a whole, and I could be wrong, I think we're, we would like to see our hamlets have some continuity to them where there's houses, one area mobiles and totally different area. We don't want random stuff all the way down the street. So I think we're, there's some hesitancy with the mobile, putting a, approving a mobile home right on the main street in Fort Kent there. That, that alleyway, the reason we closed, we denied that, that was just this winter, was because we thought there's a drainage, possibly a drainage issue right to the south of it, that we may need that as a drainage corridor for some reason there. So, like another, I hate to throw another option out there when there's already a motion on the table, but if, if we don't need that for a drainage, and if, if the administration can look into that and see, like, is that, are we ever going to need that for drainage, is that not an option, or never going to be needed, then maybe we should relook at closing that, combining it with this lot, and then saying that lot is, has to have a house and automobile on it, so we're kind of cleaning the hamlet up.
Councillor Skarsen, then councillor Swiger.
I'll just, a quick note, I'm, I'll just say I'm, I'm in favor of the five-foot without a fence, but I, I got a question, though, because it was about a year ago that we denied, maybe a little longer, in North Shore Heights, the guy wanted to build a fence, or a garage, but we, it was 15 feet, was putting it right in the middle of his narrow lot, but we denied it. So there was 15 foot there, so I guess I'm a little confused about the 15-foot compared to the five-foot and all that stuff. So, is it just five feet in Fort Kent? Is that what it is, or is it throughout?
Through the chair to councillor Skarsen. The determination of, of the setbacks is based on a few things. The districting and the size of the lot. So I am aware of, in North Shore Heights, I can't recall this specific application.
This was Don Bazare, and I think we all remember that one. It was, he wanted to build a garage, but it was too close to the property line. It was a narrow, long lot, right?
Thank you. So, in North Shore Heights specifically, they have lots that are over the 20,000 square foot threshold that allows people to have the five-foot setback. So in that specific case, his lot was, say, 29,000, so he would have to have the five-foot setback. We can grant a 25-foot setback, and then council has to grant anything above that. But in this specific case, it's hamlet zoning, and because it's adjacent to the road, they have that five-foot setback. And like I said before, if it was adjacent to a property on either side, it would be five foot. And we do have to look at these cases each individual, individually. There's no precedent set on a decision on a variance.
So, I guess the quick answer is it's different everywhere throughout the MB?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, councillor Swiger.
Thanks, Mr. Reeve. So, could you pull up annex or appendix B again, please, and show the, not the aerial view, but the, the map? So, Mr. Hogan, if you look at the, the alleyway that runs north-south directly behind that lot, it dead-ends three lots north, and then it opens up again. So, I mean, that's the kind of thing I'm hoping that we'll look at for these hamlets. Why is that, you know, should we run that alleyway through, or do we just close? I guess according to planning, there, those are roadways, not alleyways. But I look at that and think, well, I think in future, we probably need roadways through there to subdivide the front lots from the back, whatever may happen in that corridor section. But right now, I'm just, I'm asking to look at, because it's dead-ended there. I'm not sure what Mr. Bespelko thinks about that, but should that run through, or do we need those roadways at all?
So through the chair to council and councillor Swiger, possibly, but I would ask council to focus on the application at hand, because we are talking about stuff that has absolutely nothing to do with the application, and we're certainly weren't prepared for discussion today on what hamlet roads and laneways we should be closing. We're, we're just simply not prepared to have that conversation. We haven't looked into it. So, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I appreciate that, actually, and I'll just maybe ask that we, we do look at that again for future, because I've asked for that in Ardmore for years about the alleyways, and we still haven't kind of finished that one up either, so.
So through the chair to councillor Swiger, will you be making that as a motion arising?
I certainly would, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on option two from councillor Crick on behalf of council, and he's added on to that motion, construction of a solid fence or chain-link fence with slats around the perimeter of property to be completed within a year of the mobile hill, mobile home being placed on the property. Any other discussion on this motion? Yes, deputy Reeve?
I just like a little more clarification and a little more direction to whoever is doing this, that what does solid fence mean? Because that's, to me, a solid fence means no gaps of any sorts and is straight across. That is my definition of solid fence. So I, I think we should definitely have that described a little better than a solid fence.
It simply means a fence that you don't see through. Sorry. It just means a fence that's going to make, block the vision as you're either driving or walking down the street from seeing into the yard.
So privacy fence versus solid fence?
Privacy fence, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve.
Yes.
I support this application, but without condition number six. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we changing that, then, a privacy fence?
We can change it to a privacy fence instead of solid fence.
Okay, very good. All right, I'm gonna, if there's no other discussion, I'm gonna call to the vote. Call for the vote, I mean. It's defeated. Looking for another motion, please?
Mr. Reeve, I'll make the motion to approve without condition number six.
Yeah, I agree. I just want to make the note that you did approve the last one, right? Okay, sorry.
Okay, any other discussion on this? Seeing on a call for the vote? Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll take a five-minute break, and then we have a delegation here, I believe. All right, welcome back. We have a delegation from the chamber here. Come on up.
Hello.
Good morning.
Thanks for having us, Reev and council. We appreciate being here today. Basically, the reasons, I'm Serena Parsons, executive director of the fund.
Put on your mic. Yeah, you're good. Nope.
It needs to be red? Okay, thank you. I was confused.
Red needs go.
So, bear with me a moment. I just, I want to go over a few great things that are happening within the chamber, and I have had the pleasure of sitting down with, of course, Darcy, who is our appointed representative, Reeve, Mr. Kalinsky, as well as Al Hogan, to talk about kind of the Bonneville Chamber, what we do, why we need you, and why you need us. So, one thing that I would like to say is that the, the point, the municipality's success is our success, and our success is your success. We aim, everything we do is with the economic development of our region, I say region, in mind, because, again, you can't grow one without growing the other, and we really believe in full collaboration with various municipalities as well as other organizations. So we always work very closely with Community Futures, especially Community Futures, Alberta Labor, and of course, the municipalities through our appointed representatives, which we're all getting, kind of getting that all ironed out now and how that looks. So, I, I did send you guys our year in review. Thank you for putting it up there. So we're 258 members strong, which actually represents 4,990, now this is at the end of 2021, 4,990 full and part-time positions within our region. And that includes everything from large businesses, oil and gas, down to small mom-and-pop. So, so we try and represent everything. One of the things that we do that is kind of quiet and in the background is lobby. So we lobby government, both provincial and federal. Through COVID, you will have noticed on our Facebook page and things like that, that we had intimate meetings and conversations through the chamber network with various ministers, Minister of Labor, as well as Premier Kenny, one-on-one. So we're able to bring the issues that affect businesses and affect our region and municipalities directly to policymakers and changers. So, things like the wage subsidy going from 15% at the start of COVID up to 75%. Things, and Jobs Now program, different trainings, those things don't happen without the input of chambers. And we have a meeting every single week with the Alberta Chambers of Commerce, so that the issues regarding our municipality is being directed and are being discussed. So anything I hear from Al Hogan or yourself that's happening, you know, we can lobby for that, and we can get some information into the hands of those that, that need to see it. So, that's one of the big things we do that people don't really realize is a huge part of our position. But of course, over and above that, we are famous for events. We just conducted the annual chili cook-off, and we're so happy to bring the community together. That is a much-loved community event with a ton of participation, and it's something that, that's, that's just the fun. That's just because we can, and it's, it's really great. But we are really happy to bring back business mixers, networking, getting people in the same, in the same room. But one of the things that's happening next week on the 17?
Thursday.
This Thursday, is our BSN. So that's called Business Support Network Meeting. And one of the reasons why I'm here today is to ask for your support and buy-in on this meeting. So these meetings bring various businesses, industry, and of course, council together, and to have an open dialogue and conversation about what's happening. So it's really about information sharing and bringing up any issues. And the last one we had, kind of starting through COVID, was very successful, and we've got some really good buy-in from the town of Bonneville as well to attend these meetings. How many are registered now? Quite a few? So we have about 20 businesses currently registered for that, and we're expecting more. You'll see a lot of the board as well, Bonneville Chamber Board there. And so it's really important to come in, see what those meetings are all about, and have that conversation. In St. Paul, they are massive. They actually have to get a huge hall for these meetings. And the optimism, our optimism is saying, we want to grow to that as well, and we, we really want our businesses to come together and feel like they're being heard. And business walks and all of that is extremely important to go in and have these conversations, which we will be doing more of, but we want to let you guys know that, that that is important. And to be the face and to show, hey, you know what, we buy into this as well, and we support our business community and what they have to say would be great. So, bonnevillechamber.com under events, please register for that, or just let us know. We'd be happy. Send an email, let us know if you're going to come, and we'll, we'll put you in on the attendance list. Some of the things that we did, everything we do, everything the chamber does, every single event, gives back to a local nonprofit charity who's a member in some capacity. So we have partnerships with the Ronald McDonald House, partnerships with the SPCA, Stars Air Ambulance is a big one for our oil and gas show, and so everything we do gives back to the community in some capacity. Of course, that's our job, though. Everything we do gives back, but we're talking financially. So, last, the one year was a small year. We gave back 5,771, was raised for local charities. Normally, that number is much higher, but because of our reduced events. But that doesn't mean anything. When you look at the profit of the Bonneville Chamber in 2021, we made $28 in, under events. And that is not because we didn't host any, but that's because we gave it all back in one capacity or another, whether it be through the Resiliency Runs Deep program or, or anything else, because we gave it all back. So, so we definitely believe in the strength of our community. A lot of different things we did was launch shop-local campaigns and chamber market. So a few things that we have that I want to make you guys aware of. We have an online e-commerce platform, and I'm going to use a dirty word here, but it's like Amazon for, for Alberta. And it's Alberta-wide, and we are pretty soon going to have over 35 vendors registered on chamber market to shop local. So, you know, we're, and that's free. That is free for any business, and we will work with you. We will get professional photos done and that kind of thing to then start promoting. So we've been promoting join chamber market. You'll start to hear our promotions change to shop chamber market pretty quickly here. And then another shop-local campaign that we are launching early next week, and we're really, really proud of this one, is an online, or sorry, a Visa, a shop-local Visa card program. So we currently have in our possession Visa cards that can only be used to our local geographic region. And those Visa cards are, we're selling them. A $100 Visa card will cost you $75. So you can go out and get $100 worth of gas for $75. And a $50 Visa gift card will be $40. So not only by getting these Visa gift cards are you getting an automatic discount, but you're shopping local because they can only be used in our local geographical region. And so that is an amazing program that is made possible by the shop-local dollars that we did receive from the federal government. So, every single cent of that, we said, how can we maximize this? How can these dollars go directly into our community? And that shop-local Visa program was definitely one of them. Chamber market was another. What else did we do? We did a couple of commercials for the chamber as well. I hope you guys would have seen those, but, but those will be out on Facebook. That being said, so that's a lot about what we do. We need you, you need us. And I believe in, in maintaining a very good relationship. Now, we can't be here without talking about our evacuation from the Shaw House. So, that is happening. It did come as a shock to us at the chamber, I won't lie, and the difficult part of that is, as a nonprofit organization, our biggest difficulty was we were already halfway into 2022 with our 2022 budget done and expended. So, we had to go, phew, okay. So, we had to go, whoo, okay, what can we do? How can we make this work? And what is right for our organization? So, a lot of discussion, a lot of conversation, a lot of looking at what we had and what we were able to acquire. There's a lot of buildings available in Bonneville, so we do know that. The thing is, most of them were, A, too big, B, would require extensive renovation for our purpose, or C, the rent was kind of extensively high. And then, in some areas, we also wanted to make sure our mandate is to be visible. We need to be there for the business. So, we've seen this as an opportunity. It makes complete sense for the MD to put your parks and recs and to be there on site. We understand that. And so, this became an opportunity for us as chamber to grow. And so, we purchased the building. And we purchased the building right next to Lakeland Credit Union. And in discussions that we've had with Mr. Hogan, we will be out hopefully by the end of July, but definitely by the end of August. And so, we've got 20 years, we've called that beautiful space home for 20 years. So, we've got 20 years' worth of stuff in our shed and our basement that we need to clear out and get going. And so, we thank you guys for all assistance and support in that regard. But I just wanted to let you know that we have, we've purchased that building, and we will be in there, and we're really excited to be in the heart of the Bonneville business community. Now, while we will be in the heart of the town of Bonneville, I need you guys to know that we are the Chamber of Commerce for, well, any chamber in our Lakeland region is for the Lakeland, because we do believe in a regional approach. And that's why we do collaborate so much. But within that, you know, we do have a lot of MD businesses that we support, and we want to continue to support that with your new Economic Development Officer, who I've not yet had the pleasure of meeting, because I'm technically off work at the moment. But as soon as I come back, I look forward to getting them to join on business walkthroughs, helping you guys with any sort of a business licensing program or anything that's coming. We want to be a part of that, because together, we can only make great things happen together. Keep an eye out for our events coming up. We are returning back with a business awards happening in October, as well as we're going to be doing a very large employment conference in partnership with Community Futures. So, that's going to be a job fair, but it's also going to be workshops, conferences, and stuff like that to help build your business, grow your business. And we're going to have various trainings involved, whether it be retention and recruitment, which is huge in our region right now, huge everywhere, and all of that. So, we're working very closely to bring a big event, another big event to our region, and that will happen, and we're going to cap that off with the Our Resiliency Runs Deep Business Awards that will be happening on October 14th. And I think we also sent you guys some of this information that's in your packages. This is our value-added guide. So, as a chamber member, you know, we do offer certain discounts on interact fees and terminal fees, things like that. So, there's all different kinds of things that we have that members can take advantage of, and we just wanted you guys to be aware of it. So, this was in your package as well. That's it for me at the moment. Megan, did I forget anything? Megan's here to help fill in my gaps, because my brain isn't functioning like it used to.
No, I think that's everything. The one other event I wanted to point out was our golf tournament. Since you guys are a corporate sponsor of the Chamber of Commerce, you guys do get a free team. So, just something to save the date for. It's on Friday, August 5th.
Get a free team for that. Woohoo! So, that's just it. I just wanted to say that I'm here, and the chamber is open, and we believe in partnerships and working closely. And I just wanted to make sure that the relationship between the chamber and the MD is strong and that we can continue to work together.
Any questions, Joan?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Those $75 Visa cards are worth a hundred bucks. Can I get like a whole wag of them?
So, we've already had that question. For large, so our goal is to really get some big businesses to buy them for gifts for their employees or whatever. This is, I'm a hand talker. But there is a cap. We got to watch money laundering and all that. I think it's a cap about a thousand for personal. Now, the thing is, we only have so much, because we had to finance that discount. So, we only have so many, and then in the future, if it's really successful, I'm definitely going to want to bring it forward to get a sponsor to continue that program and do it as well, because, you know, that's, we've got $15,000 worth right now. And I mean, obviously, hoping that they'll sell. We haven't launched it. It's not like, it's not out there by these cards, but it will be next week. So, I'm just really excited, really excited about that program.
Just watch out for Mr. Crick's popsicle stand coming up. Any other questions? I was going to ask about that, what the maximum was, but you took care of that.
Different for corporations. Individuals, I believe it's about a thousand.
Right, right.
And we want everybody to be able to get some, so I'm probably going to limit it at 500 to start and be like, come back if we're not doing, you know, so well, but yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, Joan? Well, thank you, ladies, for coming in today. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
On behalf of the chamber.
That's it?
We can stake out, can we?
Yeah, yes. That's our guy there, so you can have a... Looking for a motion, Joan? Yes?
I'll make a motion. I'll accept this as information.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Subject, for making this motion on behalf of council. That council accepts the presentation by the Bonneville and District Chamber of Commerce on their operations in the 2021 as information. Call, any discussion? Call, call to the vote. Call for the vote, sorry. Carrie, thank you. Next delegations from the Dove Center, ladies.
Good morning.
Morning.
Greetings, Reeve Chair, Counselors, committee members, ladies and gentlemen. Thanks for hosting us today. We appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you about our agency. So, my name is Maureen Thurrett, and I am the current facilitator for the employment agency in Cold Lake and Bonneville here. And this is Ms. Linda Monroe, and she's the job coach for Bonneville. Tammy Brason is our job coach in Cold Lake. So, anyway, what we've come to talk to you today about is mainly awareness, and we've come to visit you to raise awareness within our community about people with disabilities. There are some attachments that have been provided to you, and mainly, we want to just draw your awareness to the Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities. And just to remind you that Canada did ratify this Convention on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities in the year 2010. So, if you would please look at Article 8, Awareness Raising.
To raise, or Paragraph 1A, to raise awareness through society, including at the family level, regarding persons with disabilities and to foster respect for the rights and dignity of persons with disabilities. Also, Paragraph 2, Subparagraph 1, 2, and 3, to nurture receptiveness to the persons, to the rights of persons with disabilities, to promote positive perceptions and greater social awareness toward persons with disabilities, to promote recognition of the skills, merits, and abilities of persons with disabilities and of their contribution to the workplace and labor market.
Okay, so specifically, Article 27 is regarding employment. And we'd also like to just draw your attention to Article 27, Para 1.
Subparagraphs E, G, H, and J. E, promote employment opportunities and career advancements for persons with disabilities in the labor market, as well as assistance in finding, obtaining, maintaining, and returning to employment. G, employ persons with disabilities in the public sector. H, promote the employment of persons with disabilities in the private sector. And J, promote the acquisition by persons with disabilities of work experience in the open labor market.
So, we've prepared a five-minute PowerPoint just to show you about our agency and what we do to help people with disabilities in the community to gain employment. It's a little long, but oh, thank you. Like anyone else, and we're going to make sure that, you know, if somebody keeps showing up late, well, guess what that means? That means that, you know, you need to stay later and make up that time. You know? It's learning to be responsible, right? For some folks. Some people just have it right off the top. They know. So, these are some of the workshops that we're offering, and there's more. This is just a shortlist. And we've said all this already, and we've talked about PDD eligible. This is, I'm a facilitator, so I'm going to try and make the road smooth right between both parties, like in Cold Lake and Bonneville. I'll help talk to the employers and try and reach the employers to see if we can carve out a position for an individual. Okay, you know, somebody is going to have a hard time working on a cash register. Can we do it without a cash register? Can we find something? Can we make a way without having to have a license? But the employment coach is the heads-on person with the individual, learning how to perform, how to do the tasks in the workshops and perform activities to understand maybe if that's the way they learn. Some people learn by reading, right? Some people learn by writing, and the activities are designed to help the learning process. So, these are some of the companies in both our communities, Cold Lake and Bonneville. And I've got that going like this, because we really want you, we really want you to help us to find a job position. I know that you hire in February. You put the ads out for hiring a lot in February for like groundskeepers and this type of, let me refer here. I'm lost again here. Okay, so, yeah, you put, your hiring process, a lot of it goes out in February, and you start early in April, right? And unfortunately, we were just setting up at that time, because it's a grant. So, what we're looking for really is a job in our community for the people that support our community. These are individuals who aren't summer students, not that I'm discrediting summer students, but they're staying in the community, they're contributing to the community. They live here, they work here, they buy their pants and their groceries. So, I just, I want them to have the same chance as others, but I want it to be a little more accommodating, because the majority of our folks do not have a Class 5 driver's license. They don't have that. You know, they can detail a car, but I can't get them a job because they need a Class 5. You know, I understand. I understand it's short and people are maxed out. You know, businesses, they don't have a lot of extra income, but I just, I just know that our people have the abilities. They just need, we need to carve out positions for them, like where they don't have to be on the cash register. They don't have to necessarily talk to somebody, but they can stock the shelves, they can dust, they can clean the floor, they can talk to a customer, they can direct somebody to...
They can mow lawns.
They can mow lawns, they can rake, they can water, they can weed, they can... The list is as abundant as it would be for someone who does not have a developmental disability like myself. Thank God. So, we were thinking, not only do we, if you, if you would be able to look at providing something in your MD, in my MD, for somebody, for maybe one person, two people, just look at it in your Agro Center, somewhere like that. But we'd also like to request that the month of October, if, it's already recognized nationally as the Disability Employment Awareness Month, and it's also recognized provincially as the Disability Employment Month. as the, uh, Disability Employment Month. Um, so I'm wondering if we could do that here in October in our, in our municipality, um, just to recognize, uh, employment, Disability Employment Awareness Month in our, in our home here.
Well, absolutely.
That would be wonderful. Um, some of the other things that you have, uh, attached, um, are, like the attachments that you received, are tips for interaction with people that, um, if you're nervous about, like, speaking to somebody with a, uh, with a disability that's, uh, developmental. And it, it's just designed to give you more confidence in approaching people if, uh, that's not your strength. So I'm, I'm assuming everybody's strength here would be approaching people, right? But, um...
Essentially, uh, like, uh, Maureen and I have two different, um, approaches with businesses. I walk into a business and say, "Do you have something that you have a hard time getting done, but it really needs to get done? I have an individual to help with that." Whether you do the, that job that you're missing and you give an individual something else, or that you give the job to the individual. These are people looking for from three hours a week to whatever an employer wants to give. We have an individual working fifteen hours a week. Um, so they're capable to work. A lot of these people, like Maureen said, they, they, they visit your, uh, businesses, the local businesses. And we're just finding it very, um, frustrating because a lot of businesses will say, "Yeah, yeah, oh, that's a good idea," then we don't hear from them. So, you know, like, we're kinda challenging the M Ds and, and the cities, like, to...
Absolutely.
...possibly carve out a job for them. Show these businesses. These people are valuable.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Yeah. Can you take a question?
Oh, yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's, I, I appreciate the, uh, conversation and discussion and presentation. I mean, I just always associated the, the Dove Center with just the one building in Bonneville and, and the Bottle Depot, but... So where, uh, so you're kinda, is your main office at that building, or is it in Cold Lake?
The main office is here in Bonneville, but the office in, uh, Cold Lake has been operating for years now. I'm, I'm, I've only been there, uh, five years, but I'm, I'm not sure. Like, I know that the Cold Lake or the Bonneville office here has been open, the Dove Center, for fifty years next year. You know, it's their bicentennial.
And where's the one in Cold Lake?
The one in Cold Lake is on Fiftieth, um, Fiftieth Street. Hold on. Do you have the little brochure with you?
It's right across from, uh, No Frills, right next to Express Pizza.
Okay.
And the JD Collision.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I can't think of the address. I wanna say fifty-twenty-six.
We know where it is.
Yeah, it's a lovely building. It's, uh, it's very nice, but...
And the Dove Center has been supporting individuals in the community for, like, Maureen said, fifty years. There, I don't wanna name drop, but there was that individual who was always at the hockey games. And I'm sure you guys know the name.
Yes.
And that, so, like, he was part of our program.
Ricky?
Milty.
Mil? Oh, Milty and Ricky. Ricky's there too.
Right?
Yeah.
Ricky blows the horn.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, there you go, right. Okay, um, is there any more questions?
I just had one, Mr. Reeve. Like, how many people do you actually place each year? Is there a nu- sort of approximate numbers that...
Do you know, uh, we've placed so far six people. Actually, it's, it's eight, but, uh, two of them were, um, jobs that, uh, were for individuals from last year. We couldn't bring them again into our system, into the program, because they'd already, um, benefited from the program last year. But a job came up and they were a good fit, and we thought, "Hey, this person has mobility issues, they want this individual to shred paper." Perfect. You don't have to stand. You can sit and do this job. So, um, it, that was like an individual that was placed in that, and, and another one was, who's our other person? Here. Oh, he's, he's, he's doing weeding. He's doing weeding at a greenhouse.
No, he's watering.
Watering. Okay. So, but he wasn't on our program, but we have, we have six people right now that are hired in, uh, actually, three in each community. And we want more, because we have eight people waiting in Cold Lake, we've got five people waiting in Bonneville for work.
Yeah. Deputy Reeve Fadav.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Either one.
I can go first.
Go ahead, Counselor Scarsen.
Yeah, well, I just, I'll, yeah, I'll, um, I'll just say, I mean, to kinda give you guys a plug too. I, so at Booze Juice, we have a girl working there with a disability every afternoon. I don't think it's through you. Okay, Dacia, yeah, and, um, uh, now with, uh, Peta, I plan to do the same, so we'll be talking about that as well. I mean, you're right, they, you know, anyone can do exactly what they're doing, right? So it's, uh, it's good, and we enjoy having her there, and we'll do it again at Peta as well, so.
Deputy Reeve Fadav.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so, people are, you know, people are listening. So is there, is this program at all subsidized through the provincial government so people can start hiring somebody?
It is now.
As of June third.
Yeah, as of last Friday. We've got Alberta Jobs Now that is taking their third intake. And what that means to us is that if somebody was waiting for that incentive to help, uh, subsidize, uh, a salary, you can get thirty-seven point five percent of the person's salary back to your business if you've hired them for at least fifteen hours a week for fifty-two weeks. So there's, you can, you can, if it's, um, I think you, you have to apply to, um, to show your eligibility. I left all that paperwork.
If anybody's interested, we can get that information.
Absolutely. Go to Alberta Jobs Now, and you apply, albertajobs.ca, albertajobsnow.ca. And, uh, it's a, it's a terrific incentive.
You didn't mean, you didn't, you said fifty hours a week. You didn't mean fifteen.
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 Sorry, fifteen. Yeah. You know, last year it was thirty, and it was just too much, because, uh, a lot of our folks, they, 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 they want part-time because it's too much, you know? So, yeah, fifteen, right? So it's, it works so much better. I'm really hoping, really hoping that that'll be the extra push we need to get our folks hired on.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a local guy from our area, Mike Kuzel. I don't know if he goes to the Dove Center anymore, but he, he, he deli- uh, he must wear a set of shoes out every two weeks, that guy. I, I don't know nobody that wa- if he's in our area, he's walking. If I come to town, he's walking the thing and he delivers, I don't know how many papers, how many papers in the town of Bonneville here, so amazing.
I've met the most beautiful people through the Dove Center. And, uh, I, I know him personally too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good guy, Mike. Uh, any other questions?
Yeah, just a question here. You mentioned the p- development disability not being the same as a physical or a mental disability?
Yeah, that's what is described as.
Can you kinda clarify what that difference would be?
You know what? I did bring that paperwork because I was expecting that question, because it's, um, it's not really understood all that well. I don't represent PDD though. Uh, I want you to know that because that's a separate entity with the government, but...
Just for a second? Essentially, it's if you had an accident, um, when you're twenty, and you broke your knee, and you live for the rest of your life, that's not part of PDD. But if you were, um, born with autism or, uh, Down Syndrome, things that were developed while you're a child and brought into adulthood, that's what is covered.
Here's, like, it says here, "To be eligible, a person must be an adult eighteen years and of old or older and meet these three criteria." Um, your IQ score is typically seventy or below. Um, the individual, individual must have a significant limitation in adaptive skills. And there's a whole list of, uh, or, or these are typical skills.
Yeah, like, um, helping them dress or understanding, like, we have some individuals don't understand when they're hungry.
Or when they're full.
Or when they're full, so we have to tell, tell them, okay, a normal portion size is this, um, that sort of thing, so...
And there's a whole list of, of adaptive skills, and there's like twenty-four here.
Yeah.
So if somebody was to have six or more, that, things that they just don't do well, let's say they, they have, it could be a mobility skill. You know, you, um, you can't get around. It could be, uh, protecting yourself. You can't protect yourself. You can't read possibly. You have trouble reading or writing, uh, toileting, dressing. Anyway, that's, that's the...
That makes sense.
There's more I can get to you if you're interested.
Thank you very much.
Did that answer your question?
That did, yes, yeah.
Thank you so much for your time.
Any other, any other questions? Well, ladies, I commend what you guys do. You work with our special needs people from the area. You guys are amazing women. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for this presentation as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. God bless you guys. You have a great day.
You too.
Okay. I guess we're gonna shut the meeting down till one o'clock. Is that correct?
Mr. Reeve, would you like to make a motion?
Yep, sorry. Looking for a motion, sorry.
So if I, if I may, Mr. Reeve, we, we have heard a motion, if you'd like administration to bring any of their requests back to a future meeting?
Okay. Yes?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion. It's, uh, and I didn't wanna tell her, you know, don't talk to counsel about hiring, because we don't, but I didn't wanna point to Al there. It's, you know, it's kinda, right? I mean, if we can help, we can help, but it's not us that's helping.
That's correct.
Uh, you can just let us know if there's any revisions you'd like us to make to this motion, Counselor Swiger.
They, they wanted us to do that in October. We should ask, we should do that. You have it already? Okay. Anything else, Joan? Counselor Swiger? Okay, Counselor Swiger makes the motion that counsel accepts the presentation by the Dove Center, employment agency on the benefits they provided in our community as information, and furthermore directs administration to bring back additional information regarding their request for the M D to become a supporter, partner in the job placement program, and proclaim October two thousand twenty-two as Disability Employment Awareness Month to a future meeting of counsel for consideration. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I, I call for the vote.
Mr. Hill, that one motion that we should bring forward about alleyways. I'll make that one now.
Okay, that's carried. Go ahead.
And Mr. Reeve, I'll, I'll just bring back that motion, uh, uh, to have the M D do, uh, I guess, a study of alleyways, Ardmore-Fort Kent, just for future reference. We've got hundreds of years ahead of us, and we'd like to get it right now, so...
Okay, we have a motion.
I don't know how we wanna word that, but it's...
Sorry, what? A, a study on...
On, 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 uh, the alleyways and, and the hamlets, and that may, that may include, I'm not sure, Counselor Fadav, if you got, I don't know how your cherry grove is planned out, but...
Yeah, I think that's where the, like, the area structure plans and all is all part of that, and I'm not a planner or developer, but, uh, it definitely should be considered, but, I mean, that's...
Can we just bring that motion after? Can we just... We'll pu- yeah, and then we'll do it one minute. So we're gonna... Yeah.
Motion to recess till one o'clock.
Okay. First motion to recess. All in favor? Carrie? Thank you.
So do, do we have a...